Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting remotely can do so by watching the livestream on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed on the city's Public Webcast Meetings and Meeting Materials page of the CW Eugene website. Tonight's meeting will include a public comment period. If you wish to speak and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form on our Public Webcast and Meetings Materials webpage or at the entrance of this room, and we will accept requests to speak forms until 7:35. These forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers and correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. The public comment period will be limited to 90 minutes or conclude by 10:00 PM, whichever occurs first. If the number of speakers exceeds the time we have allotted, we encourage speakers to consider abbreviating their remarks so that the maximum number of speakers can be heard. For those joining the meeting remotely for public comment period, you are welcome to email your comments to council, as well as is everyone who's watching these meetings. As a reminder, council's meeting rules of conduct apply to all attendees, both in the chambers and also in the lobby outside of this meeting room, and this includes no flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of the council. Please keep the room quiet and respectful for all speakers, and you are, of course, welcome to wave your hands in silent support. Additionally, we encourage all those who are ill or who have had close contact with others who are ill to join the meeting remotely rather than in person, and we have masks available in the lobby if you need one. In case of medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, an AED, is located on the counter behind staff on the west side of the room, and emergency exits are through the double doors located at the back of the room or through the double doors near the front, and the doors to the patio can also be used as needed. And with that, I call the April 28, 2025 meeting of the Eugene City Council to order. Begin with a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuyia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuyia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuyia Elihi. Kalapuyia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon, and they continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the Now with that, the first item on tonight's agenda is committee reports and items of interest. I will now open the floor for committee reports or items of interest from council. Counselors, please remember to press the button on the bottom ear microphone to unmute and to mute yourself when it is your turn to speak. Reports or items of interest? Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. With your permission, I have a motion I want to make. If I get a second, I'll speak to it. I move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on an unlawful transfer on vehicular portions of the right-of-way ordinance.
Second.
Thank you.
And I'll allow it.
Thank you very much. We've already passed a motion to have this ordinance brought back to council, but we've had a work session on this, at least a couple of them, and it's been to a public hearing already. So either way, having the public hearing first then allows us to have yet another work session, but it saves us the one work session, and we have a lot of stuff to do, so I'm just trying to save us the time of having yet another argument about it where it will go to a public hearing anyway as the next logical step before we have a final discussion about it, if my colleagues are in favor of saving that time.
Any additional discussion from council or questions regarding this motion? Counselors Lenka.
Yeah, the reason I opposed this before and said that was unconstitutional is because it's well-established Oregon law that anti-panhandling laws are unconstitutional in Oregon, and this is clearly targeted at homeless people panhandling. Just simply by changing the name and doing a thinly veiled safety aspect to it doesn't make it any less unconstitutional and anti-panhandling. And so I would still oppose this, and I think other counselors should look into this a little bit more and understand what's incorporated into this. There's a reason Springfield has had zero citations, because they know if they bring this to court, it will be declared unconstitutional as anti-panhandling. Just with a thinly veiled safety thing that one counselor even said, there's never been any pedestrian deaths associated with this, so it clearly, in my mind, meets that definition.
Clarifying question. Counselor Kishinsky, you are in my queue, and I just want to be sure that was for to continue with items of interest?
No, it's for this.
For this, okay. Counselor Kishinsky, and then Counselor Groves.
So I feel that this ordinance, if the concern is traffic safety, I would rather, instead of having a public hearing and a work session, to talk about something that is going to have very little impact on traffic safety, because if you look at where we have major injury crashes and fatalities, it's surrounding speeding, drunk driving, red light running. I cannot find this led, this activity led to a serious injury crash in Eugene. I might have missed one, but I can't find any. And so if we're going to be having multiple meetings about a thing, I'd rather it be one of those things. If the concern is preventing panhandling, there are much more effective ways to do that, such as working on addressing the root causes, and I don't think this will be overly effective at addressing panhandling. So, you know, I appreciate the effort to say, let's go to a public hearing first to reduce the impact on staff time and on community time and on council time, because having these kinds of discussions does take resources in our community, but I feel like by going to a meeting first, by going to a public hearing first, we're committing to at least two more meetings about this, which I don't necessarily think this topic is a priority to have two more meetings about. Thank you.
Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. And this proposal is to eliminate drivers and passengers in cars in a travel lane from passing goods or money to someone on the sidewalk or in the street, which frequently happens. And as far as the data on this, we know Portland's actually collected data on the number of homeless people involved in vehicle pedestrian accidents, and even though the population of unhoused people in the state's under 3%, 21% of their fatal accidents have been involving homeless, the unhoused. And we have a high percentage of vehicle fatalities with pedestrians, and they're almost all in corridors where we have larger populations of unhoused people. So I don't think it's a waste of time, and Counselor Zelenka, you continue to misrepresent the facts. The city attorney spoke directly to this, the last meeting where this was discussed, the work session, saying this is not unconstitutional. The fact that Springfield hasn't been giving citations on it, my understanding is the problem just stopped occurring once they passed the law. So, you know, it doesn't mean it stopped altogether, but it changes the behaviors, and that's what we're after, and really, that's what our laws are about. That's what our enforcement is about. It's not about being punitive, it's about changing dangerous behaviors, and that's what we're trying to accomplish with this.
Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I think when it comes down to passing or taking a vote as to whether this should or shouldn't be an ordinance we adopt, to be perfectly transparent, I would put myself in the likely adopt camp. However, this particular motion sidesteps a critical part of the process, and it's frustrating to hear folks talk about process and then, when convenient, it's okay to seemingly fast-track. It's been, it's been impressed from the dais that we have had multiple conversations about this. There are at least four of us who have not. Those of us who were elected in 2020 have not had those conversations. Those were prior to our role as city counselors. As I look around the room, I can see fellow colleagues who did not participate in this process. We owe it to our colleagues, we owe it to the community to have the conversation and to know the facts before taking a vote. I could be swung either way, but I'm going to be very clear right now that I would be likely to support said ordinance. I want to follow the process, so I will be voting no on the motion made tonight.
Additional discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll take a vote on this motion. All in favor?
Oh, there we go.
Or there's the vote. Apologies, still tracking to my work session counting. So three votes in the affirmative, voting yes, and five votes voting no, and the motion
Point of clarification, it's, I'm reading three in the affirmative, four in the...
But there's eight up there.
How does that work?
Who's not locked in?
It's three to five.
Now it's five.
Thank you. I was counting the thumbs and the ups and downs. So the vote total is three yes, five no, and the motion fails. Other council committee reports and items of interest? Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I wanted to note passing a friend of mine, Bob Cassidy, who was a long time, he was on, he was elected to the E-Web Board of Directors, he was on the Eugene Charter Review Committee, and a city club stalwart for many years, where I got to know him, an activist and an advocate for unrepresented, and I think Bob made a big impact on the community, and he'll be missed.
Thank you, Counselor. Many, many layers of advocacy. Thank you, Counselor Zelenka, and our condolences to Bob Cassidy's friends and family, ourselves among them. I have one item of interest, and I just want to share it with you all, because this past weekend in Eugene was a fairly extraordinary one, extraordinary in terms of the effort that goes into doing something like hosting a marathon of international renown. So much effort by our city's staff, transportation, oh, I'm sorry, transportation staff, Eugene police, in partnership, working with the city of Springfield, so many others to help support the staging of the Eugene Marathon, the 5K run, the kids' run, the half marathon, the marathon, events that lasted really from Friday all the way through Sunday evening in terms of the cleanup. That's a course that runs 26.2 miles through our community and our sister community in Springfield. That's quite an area to cover and quite an area to serve, and a really extraordinary partnership of the city with a remarkable partner at the Eugene Marathon and all of the organizations and businesses that support their work. So I just wanted to highlight the success of that and note that 14,000 people participated, 14,000 runners in that event, 1,400 volunteers from our community who spent their time to make sure that that was a safe and extraordinary experience for people, and I met thousands of people, literally, on Saturday and Sunday, and I just want to read you one email that I received earlier today. I won't identify from who, but from a participant in that experience. Dear Mayor, Johnson and Councilmember Zelenka, I had such an incredible experience running the Eugene Half Marathon yesterday. The people of Eugene were so amazing. This was my first race since high school. I've watched videos of marathons in Chicago, London, and New York, but I was stunned by the scale of supporters along the race route. I'm filled with gratitude. Your community made my running experience something that I will cherish for the rest of my life, and I heard similar comments in person from people from literally five different continents around the community on Sunday, and thank you, everyone, for all of that effort involved in an extraordinary event. Thank you, Eugene Marathon. Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry to learn of Bob Cassidy's passing. This is the first I'm hearing the news, and Bob showed up, so condolences to Bob's family and circle of friends and advocates. Been a difficult week in that South Eugene lost a pillar of our community, another seemingly preventable tragedy along our roadways. Sharon Johnson Schuman, 79, UOL professor, musician, who went for a jog and won't be coming back to the loving arms of her family because of the vehicular tragedy along the S-curve of Amazon Parkway. Same day, I received a call from a friend of mine whose father passed away around the same time that my mother passed away. And with losing Vegas, Senator Aaron Woods, Pope, I jokingly said to my friend Carl, please tell me you're not calling with bad news. He said, sit down, Matt. Moses Ross, a gentleman from the Oregon political world who a great many of you may have worked for, and that he provided telephone town halls for Congressman DeFazio, for Senator Merkley, for Planned Parenthood. He advocated for candidates and causes, passed away on Wednesday because of an asthma attack. Forty-eight hours unfold after that tragic death, and we see online someone using a pseudonym similar to Moses's last name asking for contributions to provide funeral costs. Naturally, you do the thing because you're grieving, and it's the right thing to do, and it was a scam. Could you imagine? Could you imagine? I would, Mayor, without objection, just have a moment of reflection and pause for Bob, for Sharon, for Moses, for all of our friends and family who have been taken from us far too early in this 2025.
Thank you, Counselor. Any additional items of interest? Seeing none, thank you all, and that concludes our first agenda item. Our second item on tonight's agenda is the consent calendar, approval of city council minutes, approval of city council tentative agenda, and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts to take on debt for a clean water state revolving loan fund. There are no questions from council. I will turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
I move to approve the item, oh, wait a minute. Yeah, I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar 1.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will now take a vote for this motion. Counselors, please lock in your votes in your tablets. Thank you, and the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you, and that concludes our second agenda item. Our third item on tonight's agenda is an action item, an ordinance adopting hazardous substance user fees. There are no questions from council. I will now turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
Move to adopt an ordinance...
Pardon, I'm so sorry. I did see your hand. Apologies.
Thank you. I had a question. There wasn't a request to speak screen like there is now, but, you know, I raised a question at the last meeting when we talked about the toxics fee about trying to come up with a system, working with the state, where businesses could enter the data for one time that would populate both forms. City manager, is that something we can look into?
I don't know if Travis is here, but we did note that. I don't know if you want to speak to it, but it's certainly something that we can continue to look in, just as you did.
It just seems like, you know, whatever we can do to make it simpler, still get the information, but just make it easier on the people to have to enter the data rather than doing it twice if they could do it just once. It might mean adding a couple more questions, but it just seems like something we should be trying to do to make the process simpler.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Flores, to answer your question, I did speak with the state fire marshal's office, and they said that we could work together to formulate a plan to make that a little more easier for users to report. So I'm in discussions with the state fire marshal now. She's really in favor of it, so we just have to work out some details.
Thank you very much, Chief. I think this is an important step. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions from counselors? Seeing none, I'll now turn again to the council president to put a motion forward.
I move to adopt an ordinance adopting hazardous substance user fees as provided in attachment 1 to this AIS.
Any discussion? Have a second. Seeing none, we'll take a vote for this motion. Counselors, please lock in your votes, and the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. That includes this agenda item. And the last item on tonight's agenda is the public comment period. Public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which has already been heard by a hearings official. Staff, can you please share a list and the number of speakers that signed up to speak by 7:35 and announce the first speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. When you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speaker tonight is Lynn Woodrich, followed by Tiffany Edwards.
And Sheriff, can you confirm how many speakers we have signed up?
We have 17 speakers tonight, Mayor.
Thank you.
My name's Lynn Woodrich. I'm the Active Bethel Community Co-Chair. I've lived in the Bethel area over 30 years. I live in Ward 8. I'm speaking for the Active Bethel Community Board. St. Vincent de Paul located the Lind Home Service Center in the Active Bethel community. They receive funding from many sources, including the city of Eugene. Overcrowding at the Lind Home Center has led to several severe sanitation hazards and escalating dangers. A tenant on Highway 99 was assaulted two weeks ago at their place of business by a homeless individual, with police response taking three hours. The same day, a clerk at another location in Bethel was also assaulted. Business owners, employees, and residents are facing escalating dangers, and delayed emergency responses only exacerbate the problem. St. Vincent de Paul recently added the Shiles Resource Center, a multi-agency service center adjacent to Lind Home on Highway 99. The center will house representatives from seven different services. This is a wonderful addition, but not a wonderful location. We need a police... We need a police substation in Bethel. We urge the city to act swiftly to allocate immediate resources to mitigate sanitation and safety issues near Lind Home, including dedicated cleanup crews, 24/7 enforcement, and trauma-informed outreach teams. St. Vincent de Paul and the city should be held responsible to the community for cleanup and safety. The strain on Bethel has become intolerable. Our community deserves solutions that uphold both the dignity of those experiencing homelessness and the rights of residents and businesses bearing the brunt of this crisis, including homeless-related violence. Highway 99 businesses would like to thank Mayor Knutson for agreeing to meet with us about these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speakers are Tiffany Edwards, followed by Jason Bowman.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany Edwards. I'm with the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, for your discussion today and your work session on the timeliness and options for the fire services fee as an alternative. We understand the urgency and the complexity of this discussion and appreciate you are taking steps to craft an alternative option that acknowledges the challenges many have with the permanent nature of the current fee, but also addresses the shared agreement that we do not want to see many of our community services eliminated. As it was mentioned today by the city manager, the decisions you make today about the budget will have impacts two, four, six years down the road. While making any cuts in the budget will be difficult, we strongly urge you to keep the option on the table that an alternative path forward includes thoughtful cost reductions alongside any temporary fee. After reviewing both the proposed budget and the amended proposed budget that were released these past few weeks, we believe it is certainly possible to pass a temporary fee that preserves the library, Amazon Pool, and many of the proposed service reductions while still engaging in conversations about cuts as we work to balance the budget and create more sustainable, long-term solutions. We look forward to the robust budget discussions this week and hope to find strategic ways to reach a reasonable alternative together. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Our next speakers are Jason Bowman, followed by Athena Aguiar. All right. Not seeing Jason Bowman come up, I will call for Jason one more time. Our next speaker is Athena Aguiar.
Mayor, counselors, my name is Athena Aguiar, and I'm a resident of Ward Five. At one of the first city council meetings I came to observe, I heard Josh Easterland speak about the decriminalization of psychedelic plants and fungi, which confused me because I thought drugs were decriminalized in Oregon. When Measure 110 passed, I was living out of state, and I saw Measure 110 memes in Iowa. When I got to Eugene, I just assumed that the law was still in place. So after a city council meeting, I connected with Josh to ask about it, and he told me that last year, House Bill 4002 overturned Measure 110. When I found that out, I volunteered to pass out flyers promoting decriminalization. Nearly everyone I handed a flyer to has told me they thought decriminalization already passed, and every time, I say, I thought so, too. That's why today I'm here representing Equitable Access Eugene. Many Euginians today are using, cultivating, giving away, and transporting psilocybin and other entheogens without the knowledge that doing so carries the risk of a felony conviction. Please consider Equitable Access Eugene's proposed resolution to keep those people safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Athena. One last call for Jason Bowman. Moving on to our next speakers, John Borowski, followed by Alex Chamberlain.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Borowski, Ward Three. I'm here to talk about one of the items that you guys talked about at your work session at 5:30, and that would be the comprehensive plan and the one-year action plan. As somebody who's been involved with that previous five-year comp plan and somebody who's also involved with the vetting of it through the, my seat on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee, I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that was put in by staff. It's a huge document, and there are about probably 400 to 500 pages that have to go in to submit that to HUD. I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that the staff has done on that and that they reached out to the community and how important it is to our community to be able to receive these federal funds to help with our housing and our community development and all the things that are in those plans. Likewise, the one-year action plan goes in parallel with that. It works to really get the houses and the door fronts that we need built in place. So I just, again, wanted to bring that to your attention, that it came to you in a 15-minute work session, but knowing that that stack is about this thick. And then finally, speaking to kind of what the mayor said, as somebody who has a business in real close proximity to where the marathon was and interacted with a lot of marathon participants, I can also reiterate the same thing. Everybody that came here said they had a great interaction with the city of Eugene, and it was a very powerful thing going forward. The only thing that they said was, you know, if you could just upgrade that track a little bit for us to finish at. But just joking about that. But no, everybody had a great time. They were walking a little bit more gingerly Sunday night than they were Saturday morning, but other than that, I think everybody had a good time, and I think we did our community proud by putting on that event. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speakers are Alex Chamberlain, followed by David Eichel.
Good evening, council. My condolences for your loss and my apologies for bringing up something as trivial as budgets in the wake of your grief. I looked through the budget before this, and I did not see any money allocated for cahoots. I searched for cahoots. I searched for, the only thing I could think that might be was special operations in the fire budget. But I want the money from the community safety payroll tax. We're expecting 67 million. I want some of that allocated, maybe 8 million allocated to cahoots. I understand the choices are chuff, but that's kind of the job. And I want to remind people that in Section D of the ordinance, it specifically mentions cahoots as something the ordinance is going to increase funding for. So it's disappointing that it hasn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Our next speakers are David Eichel, followed by Kiri Minicucci.
Unsurprisingly, I'm here to talk about history. Eugene's heritage has been lied about and bashed, and false history narratives have been promoted using government funds and institutions. Public needs to be informed of the truth. Individuals have abused their positions to push agendas over truth. Eugene has much to be proud of in its heritage, a heritage that is generally unknown. Wiley Griffin was the best-known Eugene citizen here in the past. He was also the first known named Black resident. He was not only an accepted, but an appreciated member of our city for 25 years. Well, he was well-known, especially because when he first came here for about three years, there was a streetcar that was pulled by a mule in the early 1890s that went around from downtown out to by the campus, 29th to Willamette, down Friendly and back again. So everybody got to see him and deal with him, and he was a nice guy, and he didn't smoke, and he didn't swear, and he didn't drink. He only had an upbeat attitude, and he was kind and never hurt people. Imagine that. People liked him. He shows up in our newspapers over the years, and you can tell how much he was appreciated. When an elevator fell when he was working downtown in one of the hotels, it was reported that it glanced off his hip and hurt him a little bit, but thankfully, he wasn't under it and killed. There are humorous things involving him. In 1988, he was sick, and people came to his house and cared for him, and he published a thank you note in the local newspaper. In 1912, a year before his death or so, he said, "The place where I most want to live is Eugene, Oregon." And in 1913, his death was marked by various newspaper articles and even an editorial in one of the local papers. And I think it's worth, well, in view of what you mentioned today earlier, no angel's going to keep this man out of heaven. Anyway, I ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speakers are Kiri Minicucci, followed by Allison Hunter.
Where can I sit? It's Kiri Minicucci. Kiri with a long E. I go by Q occasionally, sometimes. In 2010, I met Jeffrey Epstein at the University of Oregon. He was there to present for the Clinton Global Initiative, and he was in Eugene for three weeks. He stayed in the chancellor's residence. He flew on a loner plane. And this was a part of a tour that happened all across the country. I'm quite nervous. My chest is pounding pretty hard at the moment. I would like to urge the city of Eugene to come forward to the residents of Eugene with the truth. I think that it's something that affects this entire country, not just us here, but absolutely everywhere. Jeffrey Epstein is dead. He's gone. The people that he worked for aren't. They are still doing it. Right now, there are children in cages. Jeffrey Epstein did not have the opportunity to present at the University of Oregon of his own means. The Clintons, the Clintons held that door open for him. Hillary Clinton was the acting Secretary of State when she made this. Hillary Clinton set up the presentation for Jeffrey Epstein. She was currently the Secretary of State under the Obama administration. A lot of people think that child sex trafficking is partisan, that it is a Democrat issue, and that is not the truth. The Democrats are not here to protect the Clintons or anyone else that is a participant of this. I am personally of the belief that Donald Trump is absolutely 100% one of them, and there is no part of him that will ever release the Epstein files in truth. It will be necessary to force disclosure. Whoa, I'm shaking so much. I'm having a really hard time getting through this. This is really, really difficult for me. We're going to finish out those 15 seconds with, please do your research and do the right thing. Look into this for yourself. John Manotti, Kelly Manocumson, our two, Kelly Manocumson isn't with the university anymore. As far as I know, John.
Thank you, Kiri. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Allison Hunter, followed by Alan Alfredo Gormazano.
Hello, Mayor, and members of city council. My name's Allison Hunter, and I wanted to speak a little bit about the housing situation. Odds are that the city's reputation is at stake. Maybe a T-bone, maybe a ribeye, but income-based housing is what is affordable for the community. If a motivating factor for not subscribing to this model is the persons with the largest incomes, let's look at how many people are impacted and to what level by the existing disparity. It feels like a rigged housing market. Predatory lending is what started this fire. Being kicked like a can from Eugene to Springfield does not decrease the power of the message. Classism has no place here. Exclusivity, suppression, oppression, and even obstruction are not positive key factors in building sustainable communities. Juxtapositioning social classes like immigrants, disabled persons, senior citizens, non-citizens, veterans, to create division is not a community-building model. We can do better. If exercising First Amendment rights leads to psychological, physical, and financial abuse by government agencies, agents, and third-party vendors, please tell us what you did with the Bill of Rights. Interference and restriction of access, mysterious medical, legal, and even housing decisions being made for persons based on non-transparent black box algorithms, vindictive prosecution, on-off games with Oregon Department of Human Services, Social Security, health care, mental health care, senior and disability services, and many others. Dark skies are invaluable for birds' migratory paths, but these dark waters of oppression are tarnishing tract town. It is running away. We need corrective action with this rigged housing market. ADA Title II monies for providing reasonable accommodations and access for disabled persons can help to pave that way. The housing crisis is now wiping out housing for seniors at the most rapid rate. Income-based housing is the last country fair deal on this town.
Thank you, Allison. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Alan Alfredo Gormazano, followed by Jacob Tru.
And I live in Ward One, and I'm here because, well, many reasons now from listening. But the main thing I came here for is I'm both a driver and a bicyclist, and there are so many of these curb extensions that come out that are such a hazard, both for bicyclists and for drivers. How many times have I hit them with my car, damaging tires and suspension? How many times on a bicycle am I crammed in right next to a car trying to get through an intersection? I don't know how much money was spent on those or is still being spent on those. How much money was spent on the studies to come up with those? But that money should have been going to things like housing the homeless. You know, we've got a big problem with that. And since it was brought up earlier, talking about trying to make it illegal to people panhandle on the side of the street, I haven't seen any of those people be a traffic hazard. I have seen homeless people wandering around the streets, not necessarily panhandling, being a traffic hazard. So the study that says, yeah, all these accidents, these fatalities, you know, were because of homeless people, how many of those were actually panhandling on the side of the street when the accidents happened? I see those people as being pretty careful. What I would like to see is more help for these people, help in keeping their camping areas clean so that we don't get so angry at them, and more low-income housing, not affordable housing, but low-income and zero-income housing being aimed for in the city. Because we have, I do door dressing at night, and I deliver to all parts of town, and I mean, I see vast seas of condominiums all over the place, and most of those are unaffordable for people who actually live here. Plus, there's no life, there's no energy, there's no spirit in those places. I see them walled off from natural areas, just on the other side of fences, and people can't access it. But anyway, we need more low-income housing. We need less obstructions in the street that cost a lot of money, and thank you very much, all of you. Good to see you all again, and new mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Jacob Tru, followed by Steve Gilbert.
Hello there. My name is Jacob Tru. I live in Ward One. I have a few different things I'll be talking about today. We are a few days here before May Day, holiday celebrating workers around the world. On May 4, 1886, there was a rally in Haymarket Square in Chicago, a few days after some bigger May 1 rallies, in favor of the eight-hour workday. After an explosion there, the police opened fire on the rally, killing four civilians, seven police officers, wounding 70 others. Looks like almost, forensic analysis indicates that all those killed were killed by police bullets. All right. The Haymarket massacre is not only an example of police violence, but it also is a key moment in labor history. I came here today from the picket line where the largest strike at the University of Oregon, at least since 2014, and by numbers, probably the largest yet, started today and is ongoing. U of O student workers are the ones on strike, and they're the youngest union here at the University of Oregon. All the labor actions and historical context, so why do I bring this all up other than, you know, history is fun? Well, I want to highlight what a shame it is that the union workers of cahoots are no longer on our streets. I commend the four city councilors that have met with the cahoots workers and the four that have yet had an opportunity to do so. I strongly suggest you do so. I hope you take the opportunity to review the studies and documents relating to the efficacy and compassion of the cahoots workers and just how much the cahoots is loved in this town. The fact that they are no longer on our streets is not only tying up resources by the other emergency services that we have, but also takes one of the most shining things about. but also takes one of the most shining things about Eugene that other towns and, you know, representatives around the nation are trying to copy. The fact that Eugene itself is no longer supporting cahoots is, I mean, it's a tragedy. It really is. I don't have all the info, but by my estimate, looking at public data, suggests that you could get cahoots back in their van for well under $10 million. The CSI, the Community Safety Initiative, was, you know, as the fellow mentioned before me, nearly $70 million. I think we need cahoots back helping out on the streets. And considering how much value cahoots brings to the community, I think that would be a bargain. Please consider that as you go through the budget process. I know that'll be presented.
Thank you, Jacob. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Steve Gilbert, followed by Misty Bowman.
Evening. I'm Steve Gilbert. And somehow I have survived living in Bethel for 67 years. However you frame it, the loss of cahoots in Eugene has dealt a blow for public safety. The police and fire and EMT departments were already overburdened. This is a disaster. Another disaster is the widespread theft of wire in Eugene. The council should require a contractor's license for anyone selling scrap wire to all of the area recyclers. In 2018, when Lane County had just over 1,600 homeless individuals, Eugene and Lane County called this a crisis. Wish we were there now. They developed a tack plan to eliminate homelessness here. Eugene started investing in the plan and partnered with nonprofit groups to eliminate homelessness. Has Eugene's investment since 2018 been effective? Homelessness has not been eliminated, not even reduced. In fact, it has skyrocketed, so much growth. Eugene now has the highest homeless rate in the entire country. Eugene has built a homeless infrastructure, creating a climate where chronic homelessness thrives. The city of Eugene owns the homeless crisis. Today, Eugene is recognized across the country as a good place to be homeless. Thanks to these programs, the lack of any meaningful law enforcement, I don't blame the police officers, the acceptance of property crimes, the tolerance of illegal drug use, the word is out. There are almost no consequences in Eugene. So, our city is a destination. Instead of analyzing what went wrong, the city of Eugene has doubled down on their programs at the expense of public safety, the city's own budget, and local businesses. I'm confident that the city has no idea what the total cost of their city-sponsored programs are to the city, its residents, and for businesses. Eugene may be known as Tracktown, but it looks like Tentown. And for the chronically homeless across the country, more are calling Eugene their hometown.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speakers are Misty Bowman, followed by Sarah Boom.
Good evening. My name is Misty Bowman. I live in Ward 7. I'm a dark-skY Oregon advocate, and I'm here to talk about light pollution. "A Clear Midnight" by Walt Whitman. "This is thy hour, ho soul, thy free flight into the wordless. Away from books, away from art, the day erased, the lesson done. Thee fully forth- emerging, silent, gazing, pondering the themes thou loveth best: Night, sleep, death, and the stars." We're in the middle of spring bird migration. Oregon is a part of a very important path in bird migration, so I'd encourage everyone here, everyone listening at home, to either turn off your porch light or fix a piece of aluminum foil to your porch light. Draw your curtains tight as well. Any amount of blue light can be distracting and disorienting and lead to the death of migratory birds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Misty. Our next speakers are Sarah Boom, followed by Curtis Blankenship.
Greetings, city council. My name is Sarah Boom, and I live in Ward 7. Back at the start of this year, Mayor Knutson proclaimed January 27 to be Holocaust Remembrance Day in Eugene. I spoke to you shortly after that declaration. You looked at me like I was being dramatic when I said that you would be faced with a choice to collaborate or resist, much in the way German local governments chose to collaborate with the Nazi regime. Last week was Yom Hashoah, the Jewish Day of Commemoration of the Holocaust. Between your declaration and now, we've seen a rapid ramping up of state violence at the federal level. The Trump regime has begun implementing fascist policies under the guise of cracking down on illegal immigration. Immigrants and citizens alike have been arrested and hauled across state and national lines without trial. U of O students have had their visas challenged or even revoked by the Department of Racial Purity, sorry, Homeland Security. Even judges have been arrested. Citizens and local governments shortly after the Holocaust claims they didn't know what was happening in the concentration camps adjacent to their homes. I won't let you cover your ears and pretend like they did. Also last week, the Board of County Commissioners voted to issue a statement reaffirming Lane County's commitment to upholding the Oregon Sanctuary Promise Act. I expect you to work with them to uphold that promise. This administration isn't going to make it easy for you, and you may have to choose to enforce local law in direct contradiction to federal law. Protect immigrants, especially the ones here illegally. I wish you the courage to stand up for the most vulnerable in the city, county, state, country, and world. And since I still have a little time, I'm going to read from Section 3B of one of the executive orders given today. "With respect to jurisdictions that remain sanctuary jurisdictions after state or local officials are provided notice of such status under Section 2B of this order and yet remain in defiance of federal law, the Attorney General and the Secretary of Homeland Security shall pursue all necessary legal remedies and enforcement measures to end these violations and bring such jurisdictions into compliance with the laws of the United States." If that doesn't sound like the rubber hitting the road on you having to push back on what the Trump administration is doing, I don't know what will. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next speakers are Curtis Blankenship, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
I'm Curtis Blankenship, Springfield, Oregon. I've paid taxes here in Lane County since 1985. What I want to propose is take the payroll tax that you collect and put it in an escrow account and stop sending it to the federal government until they start sending us the money that we need for all this stuff that we've been talking about tonight. Just stop sending the federal government money. That money, Social Security, if you go to the Social Security Administration website, that money goes into the general fund. And as you know, Social Security is an entitlement program. And then the general fund uses your payroll records to decide how much of that money goes into Social Security, which is questionably legal. And so they should be not sending it to the general fund. It should be going into the trust fund for Social Security. So you could stop sending them that money without affecting Social Security. And, you know, the mayor of San Diego, they have a budget crisis, both in LA and San Diego. And the mayor of San Diego got up there one day and said, you know, we cannot put this burden on the cities anymore. We need the state and the counties and the federal government to send us money for these issues and problems. And, you know, they're going to do it eventually. They're going to just keep cutting. What this is, is austerity. These are austerity programs that you're witnessing. And this is just going to continue until they stop spending money on unnecessary wars with the wrong countries. And, you know, when you tell them, you put this money in an escrow account and tell them what you want and make whatever demand you want. You know, they could have passed the Equal Rights Amendment with a stroke of a pen. They could have passed that. Biden could have passed it. Trump is unlikely to pass it. Tell them to put that, we have this money for you in an escrow account as soon as you start sending us money for a hospital here. So this is something that I'm hoping will take off to the state and county payroll taxes. And eventually, private businesses can start, stop sending their payroll taxes to the federal government. This would be symbolic at first, but it'll probably start a tax revolt. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Our next speakers are Robin Bloomgarden, followed by Rich Locke.
City council, my name is Robin Bloomgarden, and I live in Ward 8. I have two issues at this point. A while ago, I spoke before you about needing more options for emergency notification schemes. Since not everyone has a cell phone or has their phones on at all times an emergency might occur. Randy gave me a Lane County link. I put my email and my landline on that list. I never received any acknowledgement in response. Now what? I want to impress upon you that once a year, a once-a-year official test of all the countywide systems would be a good idea. How do we know that they will be working correctly when we really need them? The Shakeout earthquake drills test regularly. Why not us? Second issue, parking downtown. We have no options except using an app or a credit card in the few parking meters that actually work. Same with the parking structures, when they are not free. When are they free? Where is the signage? I want to pay with cash or coins, but you have canceled working wage jobs collecting cash or coins in all these places. You say you support housing and workers in this town, but all the entry-level jobs have been cut in parking. Why? Also, COVID is over. When will we get the street parking back from underneath all the restaurants and bars? These establishments have double the floor space they pay rent for in some cases. Why is the city giving away parking space for nothing? I can't find a meter that works when I do come downtown. And if the goal is to keep people from coming downtown, it's working. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Our next and final speaker is Rich Locke.
Mayor, council, my name's Rich Locke. I'm a Ward 7 business owner. I'm the founder and president of the Eugene Business Alliance. And first of all, I'd like to say thanks a lot for raising the toxic right-to-know there, you know? I'd like to see 37% increase year-over-year in my business to redundantly report things that are required by the state. I'd like to comment on the fire tax, or fire fee, excuse me. It's a fee, just another fee, right, like the toxic right-to-know fee. It is a big scare tactic. You folks have blemished yourself, I believe, by pulling out our safety in this deal. Why don't you just come out and say, we need $10 million, and say, we're going to address a fee, and you're going to pay it? Instead of passing it along as something that's going to make us feel compelled to do it, nobody likes it. I'd like to also say, I put a document in here because there were so many people talking about cahoots, a document that y'all, I hope, read, because you guys signed off on it, was your vision, the council vision that you put into place here a few years back. And the city manager held the meeting and put it into, you guys are, and Randy, Councilor Groves mentioned that you're in misfavor. Well, it sounds like everybody, cahoots, this fee, you're not looked at highly. I would suggest that everybody start doing what you put down in that document to make a few people happy. And that would be the people that are footing the bill. And by the way, I was going to say one more thing. I can't believe a entity that has $18 billion in assets can't come up with $10 million budget deficit. A person would have to sell something.
Thank you, Rich. Your time is concluded. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. I now close the comment period. Are there any comments from council? Councilor Koszinski.
Thank you, and thank everyone who came out to speak tonight. I wanted particularly to Alex, thank you for coming out and reading the budget. The budget usually doesn't list, like, specific contracts as specific line items. The cahoots contract would have been under, and city manager, feel free to correct me if I'm saying something wrong, the cahoots contract would have been under the material and services line item within the fire department. When it does get called out more specifically because it's being talked about a change or something like that, it's usually referred to as alternative response. So alternative response discussions usually include cahoots funding. We have a budget and an amended budget this year because we are going to be talking about some cuts because funding source has been referred to the ballot. The initial contract did include funding for cahoots, funding for alternative response. So that was in the initial contract. The amended contract that came out yesterday, Friday, did not have that funding in there. That is in part because between the time when the initial one was written and the time when the amendment came out, Whitebird indicated that they were no longer going to be providing that service. And so sort of, I feel like at this point, this is less of a funding conversation specifically and more talking about who, how, why, who, how, like, what's the organizational structure surrounding this service and having those conversations. And once those conversations are had, we can come back to the funding conversation because there's just a lot of unknowns with what's going with our funding, with the discussions surrounding the fire fee and things like that. So I hope that's helpful information for you.
Councilor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, cahoots is not something we wanted to see go away. In fact, cahoots is leaving $500,000 on the table that could have been used in the final two and a half months of service. Also, I'll add, I am one of the councillors that met with cahoots staff, and it was a very good discussion. And this is a group that wants to continue serving. And it's just a matter of figuring out what course they're going to go, whether it's forming a new nonprofit, whether it's folding into government somehow. There's a number of options. I'm hoping that we'll have some more discussions as we get further down the road because it does fill a niche that needs to be taken care of. The other thing, I wanted to add a piece on the panhandling bit. Part of the danger isn't just to the people with the signs collecting money. When a car stops in a travel lane, people do diversions around the vehicle that stopped, and that causes problems as well. It's multiple issues. Even our police chief, when he was talking about this issue last Wednesday, he, like I have, have seen numerous near misses associated with panhandling. You know, again, it's not stopping people from transferring money or goods to people with signs, but it's just not doing it from a travel lane. It's nothing that says you can't pull off the road in a safe spot and go back and give them whatever you want. It's not about that. It's about safety, and it's about stopping this from occurring in an active street that's not a place to conduct business. And I'm trying to think what else I was going to comment on, but I guess that'll do it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. I will just highlight two points. One, I want to appreciate the early comments from a couple of members of our business community, and emphasis on continuing to seek ways to find agreement in the work that we have ahead in this next few weeks. Council had, I think, a productive work session earlier this evening addressing our budget gaps. And I think the commitment to, and the expressed comment that no one wants to see services cut or services reduced in our community is an incredibly important part of how we're thinking about this work in the coming weeks. And so I just wanted to appreciate those comments. And also offer two more points. One, thank you to Misty for reminding us about the migratory bird patterns that are happening right now. This is a big deal right now in the spring across the skies of Oregon. And those small steps that every household can take to dim outdoor lights at night and keep birds on track to where they're going. Bird Alliance and Autobahn Society of Lane County, these are great resources, great maps. And it's really like highlights specific nights and evenings when it can really help to keep those extraordinary, enormous migrations of birds headed in the direction that they need to go to get to warmer places or cooler places, depending on the place that they're, I should say, cooler places since they're heading up from the south. Lastly, because I can't let a really delightful opportunity to share some hopes about our improvements to our transportation system go by as an architect and urban designer, I wanted to address the question about curb extensions because this is a great opportunity to connect the dot with something that I think we have a lot of potential to do more of in our community. And that is explain, when we are making the once-every-50 or 100-year investment in our public infrastructure and right-of-ways, to explain how it is that the upgrade of the upgrade of that operating system is setting up that right-of-way to be a better contribution to our community's future now and into the future. And what I was taking away from the questions in that public comment is that there are a couple of things. The basic question, like, what does a curb extension do? Like, why do we have these bulbs coming out with some of the improvements made at intersections that, you know, used to be sort of set back and behind the edge of where parked cars would be? And the reason for that is to reduce the distance, literally reduce the crossing distance, the distance of time that a pedestrian is exposed to vehicular traffic, because that is the most dangerous time to be a pedestrian, is in the crossing of a street when you are crossing a vehicle, a vehicle's path. So when we neck down that distance by creating these curb extensions, it reduces the amount of time and the distance a person needs to cross, and that's a big improvement to pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. It's a big contribution to age-friendly communities. It's a great opportunity to do things like incorporate accessibility at those intersections, and also make sure people aren't wheeling around them at high speeds, because it changes the turning radius. So that's just a why, and I'm always happy to talk about how it is that we are building our city for the rest of the 21st century. Thank you. Any other comments from Council? Seeing none, I will now close the April 28th, 2025 City Council Meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you.